Welcome to Sound Off on ninety six seven The Eagle, La Porte County's original social media. Sound Off is a public interest forum that encourages your voice to be heard on the topics and issues impacting our local communities. We invite you to be part of the conversation by calling or texting two one nine three six two oh five two two. You may also email your questions to soundoff at ninety six seven the eagle dot com. This is a topic based program and we ask that you keep your comments brief, concise, and related to the topic being discussed. The views expressed on Sound Off are those of the hosts or callers and do not represent the opinion of ninety six seven The Eagle, Spoon River Media LLC, or the sponsors. The on air line is now open for your calls or texts at two one nine three six two oh five two two. And now, Sound Off on ninety six seven The Eagle.
A pleasant good afternoon. Welcome to Sound Off on this Monday. Stan Maddox here. Our guest today, we have a guest in our studios. It's La Porte County Commissioner Joe Haney. So give us a call. That number again, three six two zero five two two. So give us a call or shoot us a text message. Commissioner Haney, welcome to Sound Off.
Thanks, Stan. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
How are things going so far during this new year? Of course, a new face on the county commissioners. Seems like things have been a little more peaceful, but there's been a few heated exchanges occasionally, but not nearly as often as the past four years.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's nice to have a fresh face on there to join, to, to, to join the commission. So it's been, it's been nice. Like, it's like I said, to have a fresh face there. It's been, you know, we've had our ups and downs. Right now, we're, we're currently dealing with for folks who have been around the complex out on State Street there by the Hyler Building. We've got that big area torn up there. There was a sewer line break. So I got down in there to get to fix it and then realized that who knows how many decades ago, there were some old, old fuel tanks down there that were stored as well. So we had to get those up out of there and remed, and we're gonna have to do some remediation and on those and take care of that, you know, wrap up any environmental concerns that might be there from, from those being left there for, again, like you said, I mean, they've been down there for decades since before we, you know, the county purchased the building. So that's, that's what that kind of construction mess is right there that we're working on finishing, getting cleaned up. So I think soil sample tests are next to make sure that, you know, any fuel that may have been left in those tanks, because some of them, you know, they'd filled up with water over the years. So, you know, it's like, how much, you know, leaching or whatever else do we have? So we're working through all that to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's and hopefully we'll have that resolved here, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
Of course, that's the building the county commissioners offices are at and some other offices too. But that building is open. It might look like it's closed because of the work involved, but everything's open as usual.
Yeah, yeah. Everything's open. The, the, the main entrance there, that's kind of catty corner to the courthouse is open. So you can get in there, all the offices are open, the elevator to get to second floor is still working. Everything's good there. The sewer line is, has been temporarily repaired while we get the rest of stuff there. So the bathrooms are up and operational and stuff. So everything, yeah, as far as the public is concerned, we're open and anything you need, we're, we're there for you.
Boy, any idea on the history of these fuel tanks? Was there once a gas station located on that side or, of course, that building's been there for quite some time.
Yeah, yeah. The building's been there for quite some time. So if I had to guess, that was there either for an emergency generator or for heating fuel oil. I don't know that the, that the testing's come back, you know, do we know exactly what it was, you know, what those tanks were there for yet? But I would assume it's probably heating oil, something like that before, you know, all the natural gas lines were run and stuff like that. It, you know, it's been, it's been quite a while.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Like you said, decades and decades ago. Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Well, I'll tell you what, we have a phone call right now to get to. You're on Sound Off with Commissioner Joe Haney.
Yeah, Mr. Haney.
Yes.
Yeah, I got a question, a couple of questions. You never want a VA hospital for the veterans. Are you going to be working on that?
Yes, 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 we are. So we, we have a lead, a really good lead on a good location that may be donated to us if, if we can get one here right now. So the, and this has been something that's been closed for a couple of years now. So there's a, there's a process at the federal level where they reevaluate needs for veterans, clinics, and hospitals. And until the federal government opens that back up, which is, like I said, it's been closed for two or three years now at least, until they open that back up, there's, there's no, there's no avenue for us to pursue to try and get one here. Like I said, I do feel like I've, I've, I've got a pretty decent location that'd be donated to us, that'd be convenient for pretty much everybody and fit really well right here in La Porte County. But until the federal government opens that program back up and, and they take another look at it, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck.
Okay. And other question, you, you're always talking about corruption. What kind of corruption are you talking about and who was the attorney behind it? Thank you.
So there, there's been, over the past four years, I've seen quite a lot of bad behavior, you know, and, and we've seen some of those reports, some of those reports have been released, you know, for example, there was a counterfeiting and forgery issue that special prosecutor proved happened, but declined to prosecute because he didn't think he could prove criminal intent. So here, here's a very recent one that just happened at the end of last year. So outgoing Commissioner Merzinski unlawfully signed a contract for $65,000 for a company in his last week in office. Now, this is something that the county never voted on, the commissioners never voted on. He signed this contract, scanned it, emailed it to the company, and we were able to catch it. So we caught it, our attorney, our, our current county attorney got involved. He sent a letter to the company involved, letting him know that Merzinski had acted unlawfully. That information was taken and passed on to the state police. One of the issues that we have with white collar political type crime and politicians in the state of Indiana is the state legislature has a number of different rules and regulations. So like Title thirty six, for example, deals with a lot of county government. So Merzinski acted unlawfully. The problem is, is that there's no enforcement mechanism for a lot of these white collar political crimes. So the state police, for example, yeah, they found he, he violated state statute, same thing for the state board of accounts. They have emails from both of them from their investigations on what he did. The problem is that neither one of them have any teeth to enforce it. Now, again, this is another example of, of, of acting too quickly, which, which, which is a problem that, that I'm really getting tired of hearing. So because, because we found this, because it took action and stopped him from, before the money changed hands, before the county paid out $65,000, it didn't trigger the criminal element that's in, I think it's Title thirty five. So it didn't title, it didn't trigger that criminal element. So if we had let it go on through and the county had been defrauded that thirty, that sixty five thousand, then there would have been able to be a criminal prosecution because we caught it early enough. It's still in Title thirty six and Title thirty six, there's no enforcement mechanisms other than state board of account issuing a strongly worded email. So this is a massive problem that our state representatives and senators need to get on to put enforcement teeth in here. When you have, when you have the, the, these crooked politicians that are doing these things, there's got to be an enforcement mechanism to punish these people for, for, for doing what they're doing and that they shouldn't be. So that, that's one of the reasons why you see time and again, yeah, they did it, but there's never any criminal charges because it's falling outside of, outside of that purview most of the time because we're catching it before they actually are able to. Now, those are the times that we catch it, right? How many times we didn't? And at a prior meeting back, it was the end of February, I tried to get the commission to investigate Commissioner Merzinski's last six months that he was in office, if he executed any other contracts. Commissioner Graham Rosas said, well, why don't we investigate you? And I said, okay, fine. Let's go back two years. All three, all three current sitting commissioners and former Commissioner Merzinski investigate all the four of us. And let's see if anybody has been, other, other than this one instance, we know for sure, for example, with this one contract, who have been, who have been acting unlawfully. And they voted it down two to one. And, you know, my question is, why? Why wouldn't my fellow commissioners want to know if Merzinski, because we know we caught him red handed once. We know he acted unlawfully. SBOA says it, state police do as well. So we know he acted outside the lines. Why don't we go investigate all four of us? I'm, I'm cool with that and I made the motion for it. I voted in favor of it. Why are they trying to hide and bury this stuff? That's, that's the issue. Why, if we want to be open, we want to be transparent, why don't we actually do that? And, and we're not. So that, that's some of the, there's some real world tangible things right there that everybody can look at and know for sure that, yeah, this is happening, there is corruption in La Porte County. And unfortunately, until we can get things that have enough teeth in them, you know, or, you know, what, what do you do then? You know, I, I, one of the, the commander that I spoke to with the state police of, of local post, you know, I mentioned to him, like, basically what I keep hearing is when I catch these folks doing this stuff and report it, I'm reporting it too soon so that we stop the financial transaction. And then they, then the state police don't have anything to do. And I said, you know, so, I mean, I can't sit on my hands once I find out about it because if I did, then I'd be complicit. He's like, yeah. And, and, you know, there was some good sympathy from him. So, I mean, there's a lot of good men and women in law enforcement who want to do something. But we just don't have the, the enforcement mechanisms because the, the state just, our state reps and senators just have not put in the work to give enforcement teeth to these different agencies to enforce, you know, the, these, you know, the entire, the entire code, all, all the statutes.
All right. We got a text message. A VA hospital would be good for La Porte.
Oh, it'd be, it'd be fantastic for La Porte. So, and obviously my focus is La Porte County residents, but for folks who aren't, you know, folks who are on, especially, you know, like Porter County, you're in the eastern half of Porter County, you've got to go all the way out to, is it Crown Point or, or you're, or you're heading into the city of Chicago and, you know, even western St. Joe County, you're still heading way out Michoacoula way. Was it Michoacoula, technically Michoacoula or Elkhart? It's out that way.
Yeah, I'm, it's either, it's in that direction.
Yeah, it's east of, it's east of the city of South Bend at least. So, yeah, I mean, we desperately need it here for, not just for La Porte County resident or veterans, but for the veterans that are in the eastern side of Porter, Stark County as well. It'd be much easier for Stark County to come up here than it would be to be going those other directions as well. So, and, and, and the numbers show, you know, we've run the numbers, we have more than enough veterans, you know, in, just in La Porte County, let alone when you start kind of connecting the, the donut around it of, of, of usage to justify one.
Boy, the site you have picked out, is it located in the city of La Porte or out in the county?
It's, 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 it's a good central spot. That's all I'll say right now. I don't want to, I don't want to mess up any, any potential future with, with it, but it's, it'll be contingent upon, it's one of those, it's kind of like a, you know, the, the carrot and the stick type of thing, you know, we've, we've got a carrot for the feds to be like, hey, you know, this, we've got a spot, you know, and hopefully, hopefully it's going to be that kind of situation, I hope. But yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, we got to take a quick commercial break. Stay with us here on Sound Off.
Tired of playing what's for dinner every night? Well, stop scrolling through your fridge like it's a social media feed. Fear not, hungry human. Domino's is here to save dinner with hot, fresh, cheesy pizza delivered right to your door. Download the Domino's app and track your order in real time and know exactly when your pizza is on the way. Plus, every time you order with the app, you're getting closer to your next reward. That's right, pizza lovers, every slice counts. Download the Domino's app now and make pizza night even better.
You know, there's holidays. And then there's La Porte's Dingus Day. This year's Dingus Day will be celebrated on Monday, April twenty first. Make plans to stop out and enjoy some great food, plenty of entertainment, and endless drink specials.
Are you guys as excited as I am?
Each stop will have its own Polish sampler plates for seven bucks and Coors and Miller Lite sixteen ounce jars for three bucks.
I'll drink to that.
This year's lineup includes Casey's Lanes, Monty's Bar, Dick's Bar, Burger Barn Grill, PRCU, JJ's Sign Out Bar and Grill, PNA, Hilltop Bar and Grill, Mickey's, Shooter's Bar and Grill, and Ringer's Bar and Grill. You won't want to miss this year's Dingus Day, Monday, April twenty first. Buses will run from four to eleven PM and each stop will have plenty of food, drinks, and entertainment. You must be twenty one to participate and please celebrate responsibly.
Wow, heavy drinking crowd. I better go out for more beer.
It's La Porte's annual Dingus Day celebration, Monday, April twenty first.
Hey, let's gear up for the Tuesday edition of the Mayhem. Dennis Sedell here, reminding you to tune in for your Tuesday edition of the Morning Mayhem beginning at five AM. Of course, I'll kick things off with some great country music at six thirty. We've got La Porte City Mayor Tom Dermody joining us for Stump the Mayor. Stan Maddox, well, he'll have a look at your local news throughout the day, as well as Wayne Maher and your forecast. Tuesday edition of the Mayhem, make sure you tune in, starting at five AM right here on ninety six seven The Eagle.
With so many things going on around the area, it's hard to keep up with this or that taking place, especially when the weekend arrives and you're looking for something to do and all of a sudden you forgot. Well, not anymore. Let us introduce you to the Weekend Entertainment Guide. Heard every Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday right here. We'll list your nonprofit event on the air for everyone to hear. Also, we'll list it on our website at hometownnewsnow.com for others to see. Just visit hometownnewsnow.com, click on the submit tab, and fill out the form and contact us for payment as we take credit or debit cards. It's the Weekend Entertainment Guide, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays here at hometownnewsnow.com.
Partly cloudy skies this afternoon with highs around sixty three. Partly cloudy skies again tonight, slight chance for showers, lows dip down to about thirty nine. From the weather center at hometownnewsnow.com. Currently, it's sixty four degrees.
Thank you for tuning into Sound Off. You can now text or email your questions directly to the studio. Call or text three six two oh five two two. Or email your questions to soundoff at ninety six seven the eagle dot com. This is Sound Off.
And welcome back to Sound Off on this Monday. Stan Maddox here. Our guest today, La Porte County Commissioner Joe Haney. Give us a text message or a telephone call at three six two zero five two two. Boy, at the last county commissioners meeting, Shaw Friedman, attorney, former county attorney Shaw Friedman gave a presentation. He's been hired again to fight NIPSCO, this time over NIPSCO's desire to provide energy for the data centers in their service area. He was saying that a subsidiary company of NIPSCO has been formed, they're called Jimco. But Shaw's saying the fight is over because they want all this energy, but yet they could pass on rate hikes of getting it to the ratepayers and when the ratepayers should actually share in the profit making, if you're going to sell all this energy and you're going to make a lot of money. He said that NIPSCO is portraying themselves as the, the darlings of data centers to investors at Wall Street. What are your thoughts on this? Seems like the similar things have been said in Porter County where data centers are being proposed and resisted by members of the public. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, you know, NIPSCO is, I, I've got quite a few issues with NIPSCO. Obviously, you know, their, their, their rate hike, you know, I'm trying to think of the, it seems like every, every year it's either electric or, or gas, depending on the year of rates they want to raise. NIPSCO's been, had a number of different issues as far as wanting to open plants in other areas that are outside of their service area. So they want to, you know, be it solar, wind, natural gas plants, whatever the case may be, through one of their subsidiaries and that, that, that's Shaw Friedman's argument that they, that, you know, that's going to be a detriment to the ratepayers here in, in northern Indiana, which in, in that case, yeah, he's probably right on that. You know, so my, my disagreement with what we've been doing is not, is not so much, is not so much, no, it's definitely not that, you know, NIPSCO is doing things that they shouldn't be. It's that, do the taxpayers of La Porte County need to fund an attorney to go fight NIPSCO over this? No, no other community, you know, municipality, county is hiring an attorney to go and spend taxpayer money to go fight NIPSCO. There are various organizations that do, that, that do this for a living, that advocate for consumers. The CAC, for example, is a great one and they're the ones who, who got, you know, this latest rate down, if you will. The issue with this most latest hiring is, again, we've got taxpayers now advocating for and against, you know, the, the private market. And no other community is doing that, nor, nor should they, nor should we. We, we, we shouldn't be spending taxpayer money to do this. There are other organizations that advocate for and against these things as well as federal entities, you know, that are going to take a look at this and trying to determine if that's a good step that NIPSCO should or shouldn't take. What we need to be focusing on is at the state level, making sure that our state reps and the governor get people on these utility commissions that are going to have the best, the best interests of the average ratepayer and the average citizen for what we have to put up with, with our bills. Because all, you know, our bills have been absolutely through the roof. And if NIPSCO is going to lay out all this money to build infrastructure and other things in other areas that are outside of their service area, they're taking funds that should be used for our infrastructure here locally, you know, because we're in a, we're in a, you know, we're a captive market for them, you know, by law, you know, they, they've got a monopoly here. And those are things that need to be readjusted, but that's things that the state needs to do. So I don't think that the taxpayers should be funding, you know, a private attorney to go on this, you know, to go on some kind of Don Quixote type, type quest of tilting it, you know, NIPSCO's windmills, so to speak. You know, it is, it's just, it's just not, especially with how tight things are financially for the county right now, to be spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars so that, you know, a guy can get up there and say, oh, look at me, I'm fighting for the people of La Porte County. Well, you're getting paid to fight for the people of La Porte County. It's not an altruistic, you know, endeavor there. You know, you're, you're getting paid a ton of money. So, you know, you can't, you can't claim to be, you know, altruistic and when, you know, when you're making money hand over fist.
Okay. As these arguments, has that made an impact on you? After all, there is a Microsoft data center planned here in the city of La Porte. Does that change any views you might have on that?
So the, the data center in La Porte is being handled completely inside of the city limits of La Porte. So the county doesn't have any input on that. You know, it, it, it is what it is. You know, my, my only concern there is as far as their water usage, which I've been told that they're going to be running a non-contact cooling water continuous loop thing. So there's going to be very minimal water usage. Once they get, you know, all their pipes filled and they're doing what they're doing, there's going to be many, you know, relatively minimal water usage, which is fine. You know, and for, for folks who don't know, there, there's a couple of different ways you do the cooling. So, you know, non-contact cooling is standard in most of them, but, you know, if you're, it takes a little bit more work and costs a little bit more money to recycle it versus just dumping the water out in a ditch somewhere or, you know, out in a field and, you know, just getting rid of it. So some of these things can use a tremendous amount of water. If they do things right, they keep it in a closed loop and, you know, have all their cooling radiators and stuff to dissipate that heat out, then you're using minimal water considering, which is fine. But, you know, you, you've got to hold, you know, a lot of these data centers feet to the fire because we've seen what's happened around the, around the country. Some places do it right, some places get it wrong. And we got to make sure, you know, if we're just going to be here, we need to make sure we get it right.
Okay. We got a text message. Why do county officials ignore wage violations within the sheriff's department and jail? They're saying jail deputies are doing administrative work, making jail deputy pay while sheriff's civilian deputies doing administrative work for much less pay.
I, so that would be an excellent question for the sheriff and/or county council. The council sets the wages and the sheriff's, the sheriff is an independent elected official who has oversight, you know, oversight over his department. Commissioners don't have oversight over, you know, the day to day activities of the sheriff's, of the sheriff's office. I, I am not, I'm not aware of that, so I can't speak directly to that. I would say that would be a better question for the sheriff's department than, than for the commissioner's office.
Okay. Statewide property tax reform that continues to take shape in the state legislature, no decisions yet. We're not sure how everything is going to shake out. But if there is a loss of revenue, has the county come close to any decisions on how to make up for that lost revenue if it happens?
Yeah, we, we've been trying to have a number of different discussions on that. So we, we're going to have to, at the county, we're going to have to, regardless of whether or not these property taxes pass, which something's going to pass. We, we need to tighten our belt anyway. We've been running in the red for way too many years. So we've got to tighten our belt. One of the things that we need to look at is, you know, some of the frivolous spending is another reason why I was against, you know, tens of thousands of dollars going out to pay for an attorney to, to fight NIPSCO. You know, we, we need all that money and we're, we're going to have to start really looking at everything. I, I'm, I'm trying to think of the best way to put this. So, you know, the state reps and senators down there, I, I don't know exactly what, what some of them are thinking with some of the things that they're proposing. And this isn't, we need, we need tax relief, period. Indiana as a state, anyway, at least from the state government, has had a major surplus every year going back for several years. Most of the cuts that were, that, that they're doing at the state, though, are going to impact us here locally. And then at the same time, as they're cutting our funding, they're also putting all these mandates from the state on us on what we're going to have to do. So one of those is, they're, they're going to, it looks like they're going to be forcing, this is going to be a council decision ultimately, not the commissioners, but they're going to be trying, they're going to be trying, forcing, it looks like this is going to pass, a wheel tax. So right now, the city of La Porte has a wheel tax, but the county does not. And I'm trying to recall, I don't recall if Michigan City has a wheel tax or not, but...
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Yeah. So, so local municipalities, in order to get community crossings grants, which is something we do for streets, and right now, this year for community crossings, the county, La Porte County is doing sixteen miles of road of repaving. And that sixteen, and that sixteen miles is covered under community crossing. Now, the state takes a tremendous amount of tax money from, 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 from the residents, right? The state, in the past couple of years, we've seen local, local state rep raise our gas taxes to some of the highest gas taxes in the nation, right? We rival next door Illinois. They're taking all, an insane amount of money from us in just gas taxes alone. And they take this money to hold it down in Indianapolis and then they give some of it back in the form of community crossings grants. Well, now, they're going to say, all right, we're taking all this money from the people of La Porte County, and now we want you to tax them again eighty bucks a year per car, which is probably what it's going to work out to be. Want, want you to tax them again just for owning a car, even, even if they're not driving, just it's got a license plate on it, tax them again, and only then will we give you the money that we took from you initially anyway. So when you look at our paving for, for this year, which it's, and this is something I've been complaining about for a while, is that we have to do more paving, we have to do more chip sealing. This year, our total amount of paving is going to be thirty eight point two miles of paving. And we'll get into the rest of it in a minute, chip sealing and stuff like that. So literally, almost, or not quite half, but forty, what's that, roughly forty percent? Sixteen out of thirty eight point two? Roughly forty percent of our paving this year of our, of our full, full paving is thanks to community crossings grants. If we don't pass that wheel tax, we're going to lose that. You know, and, and we've got the second largest number of road miles in the county, or in the state, I should say, and we have to do something about that. So we're also going to be doing chip sealing, we're, chip sealing a total of twenty seven and a half miles, and then we're crack sealing thirty seven miles. And hopefully, we're going to do a little bit of micro sealing as well, a couple of miles of that. Micro sealing is kind of a nice little extra cover to buy you another couple of years of good level road for stuff that's been paved, you know, a couple of years ago, rather than just, you know, like a traditional crack seal. So it's, there, there's several different ways that we can, we can improve our roads, but we've really got to, we've really got to buckle down and, and it's unfortunate that if we do get some property taxes passed, which citizens need, the state isn't cutting their budget any. They're going to force the counties to and cities to. And then at the same time, you know, for, start forcing municipalities to raise taxes as well. And then that's not what we need. You know, this, the state wants us to tighten our budget, which I believe we should and we need to. But the state should be tightening their budget as well. You know, you, you can't have your cake and eat it too, which is what they're trying to do. I understand, you know, Indianapolis, and there's a lot of money earmarked just straight for Indianapolis itself. I get it, it's the capital, we want to keep it nice and maintained, but at the same time, you know, the majority of Hoosiers do not live in Indianapolis. We live in the rest of the state and we deserve good roads and good infrastructure as well. We live in the rest of the state and we deserve good roads and good infrastructure as well.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the excise, uh, tax or the wheel tax thing, yeah, the state's telling you, pass it or lose 40% of your road money from the state. I mean, what else do you do? You're going to have to pass it. In all likelihood.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that, that's ultimately going to be for, um, for the council to decide, but I, that's, you know, to, to lose 40% of just our paving, you know, and obviously that doesn't include the road ceiling and other stuff, but the actual full-on paving, which is what most people would like, like to see and want to see. Um, that, that, that's a huge hit. Um, yeah, it's, it's a massive amount of money that we're losing out on.
All right. Well, it's time for another break. Uh, stay with us here on Sound Off.
Challenged credit shouldn't stop you from driving the vehicle you need. With our fresh start credit approval at Michigan City Hyundai, getting into a new Hyundai has never been easier. Our goal is 100% credit approval. Plus, every one of our new Hyundai's comes with Hyundai's America's Best Warranty and Owner's Assurance. That includes a 10-year, 100,000-mile powertrain warranty and complimentary maintenance for three years. Don't let past challenges keep you down. Visit us in-store or online at MichiganCityHyundai.com.
You don't like buying a car this way.
Hey Mike, have you heard about the amazing auto loans at First Trust Credit Union?
What's the scoop?
Well, First Trust has low-rate auto loans, there's no application fees and you can even delay your first payment for 60 days.
Wow, I've been thinking about buying a new car.
Yeah, you should check out First Trust. You can get a fast, easy pre-approval and I'm sure they have an auto loan that's right for you. You can purchase something new or even refinance vehicles to get a better rate. If you need a vehicle, First Trust's auto loan team is waiting for you. Call First Trust Credit Union, apply online at FirstTrustCU.com or stop by a First Trust branch in Michigan City, LaPorte, Valparaiso or Wheatfield.
All loans subject to credit approval with rates based on Consumer Credit Scoring System. Interest will accrue during 60 days payment is deferred. Rate match is subject to predetermined limits.
Are you ready for this month's radio auction? Well, it's happening right here on 96.7 The Eagle. Join Debbie and Dennis Sodell Saturday, April 19th, following the 8:00 AM news for unbeatable deals on certificates from some of your favorite local businesses. Mark your calendars for Saturday, April 19th. If you want to sneak peek, head on over to HometownNewsNow.com, find the 96.7 The Eagle tab and check out the radio auction page for a list of all the hot items. It's the one and only radio auction, Saturday, April 19th on 96.7 The Eagle.
Have an anniversary coming up? Enter the Tradio Anniversary Club. Every weekday at 9:30 AM, we read all the anniversaries for the day and every Friday, one lucky couple will receive a $20 gift certificate, society floral and gifts. To enter, go to 967theeagle.com and click the Submit tab and enter your information right there. Or write the couple's name, address, phone number and anniversary date on a three-by-five card and mail it or drop it off here at the radio center. 1700 Lincoln Way Place, Suite 5. The Tradio Anniversary Club, every weekday at 9:30 AM on 96.7 The Eagle.
We're waiting to hear from you. Dial or text 362-0522 and let us know what you think. That's 362-0522. Back to Sound Off on 96.7 The Eagle.
And welcome back. Our guest again, Commissioner Joe Haney. Give us a call or a text, 362-0522. Let's take another phone call. You're on Sound Off with Commissioner Haney.
Hello, Stan?
Oh, hi Bill. What's your question for Commissioner Haney?
Okay, I got a couple of realistic questions here for him. You got this situation, uh, that you've got one attorney hired, uh, to fight corporate NIPSCO. Do you think corporate NIPSCO has any attorneys and, uh, are they dummies or are they pretty, uh, would they pretty well work together? Second thing, um, did you ever have to generate, uh, your own electric? I have a generator when electric goes out. I think, uh, NIPSCO's rates are real reasonable when you figure out how they bring the electric in for a very reasonable rate. It's just plain fact as I see it and, uh, yeah. So, um, I'd sooner, uh, pay their price and their prices go up too, you know? All their fuel, all their trucks, all their men working on when these power outages are, their price goes up just like our, uh, our carrots and our groceries at the store. Everything goes up, including for NIPSCO. Thank you.
Well, um, this may be the first person I've ever heard of that thinks that NIPSCO's rates are, uh, reasonable. I've, 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 I've heard from hundreds of, uh, hundreds of residents here in LaPorte County and, and not a single one has, uh, ever said they thought, uh, until now, that I'm assuming this gentleman lives in LaPorte County. Um, yeah, until now, I, I, this, that's the first I've heard of that. Um, as far as NIPSCO's attorneys, I know they have a fleet of attorneys, um, that they work with, that, that are there and I don't know their, you know, I, I would assume NIPSCO has the money, uh, to, uh, to, to hire some pretty high-end attorneys. So I, I would assume they're of decent caliber, but I, I don't know. I haven't had a whole lot of direct interactions with them.
Okay. Uh, text message, uh, the question is, why is the Kingsbury Bioenergy Campus so tight-lipped? Not even some members of the planning commission knew about it.
Um, so the Kings, that Kingsbury Bioenergy, uh, was, uh, was approved, uh, last year, went, the plan commission approved it last year as well as the BZA to get their, uh, variants that they needed. So, um, uh, while there were some new members on the plan commission this year, um, they may not have been aware of it, uh, plan commission last year when they passed it, all the plan commission knew about it, um, and voted on it and passed it. Um, it is a, um, they take in a bunch of food waste, uh, from around the county and neighboring counties. They process that food waste and in return they get two products out of it. One is a, um, uh, liquefied condensed, um, methane gas that gets sent into a pipeline and sent out, uh, to be used, uh, in lieu of or in conjunction with natural gas. Uh, and then the other product is a kind of like fertilizer type of product that they sell that's also used. So, um, it's pretty good, uh, you know, recycling reclamation project from what I understand. I mean, I don't know all of the details, but everything that they presented and whatnot seems to make sense. It's got all the approvals from all the various state agencies, IDEM as well as federal agencies. So, um, seems to be, seems to be going well so far and, um, you know, several million-dollar investment, um, there in Kingsbury, which is what Kingsbury is for, you know, for, for that types of, those types of things. There's a lot of truck traffic that comes in and out of there and that's, that's where, um, that's where something, you know, is kind of heavy industrial or has a lot of truck traffic like that should be. So, you know, it's in the right, it was a right fit in the right place and, um, you know, yeah.
Yeah, they recently had a groundbreaking, I think, um, they're going to be operating sometime next year, at least that's the goal, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of interesting what, uh, people can do with, uh, waste nowadays of all types. Uh, somebody's asking, are regular payroll taxes taken out of the money paid to county attorneys and the money paid recently to Shaw Friedman?
So all the attorneys, um, their, their firms are what's contract, technically what's contracted with, so their firms, um, businesses are 1099 by the county. So the county just pays them the money and then the firms have to handle from their, uh, you know, how they handle their tax situation with the IRS and payroll and stuff like that.
Okay, so they're, um, they got to file the, uh, 1040 EZs or whatever, uh, to, to pay their own taxes.
Yeah, yeah, they've got to do their own W2s, 4s, um, their 1099s, you know, and everything else that they need to do.
Okay, here's another question. Why do elected county officials not have information on the website beacon like all other citizens showing what property taxes are paid on each property?
That, that, that is an excellent question. That's, uh, actually something that, um, that some folks have been asking when they look at, um, you know, a certain elected official who has, uh, multiple, uh, who, uh, has, uh, them and their spouse have two different, um, homesteads, one, uh, one, or two different residences, I should say, uh, one residence in Michigan City, one in Rolling Prairie. Um, people ask that question a lot. So the short answer is, uh, for beacon, all that information is available to the public if you contact, um, the, uh, the assessor's office directly. If you can't find it online, you can reach out and get that information directly from the assessor's office. For, uh, one of the reasons why some of that stuff, you'll see a lot of law enforcement members, judges, things like that, elected officials, uh, who've had threats, um, uh, their, their information, uh, kind of gets scrubbed from the internet so that it's harder to find. That way, you know, if somebody does a request, you know, if it's just Joe Citizen making a request, that's that, but, um, you know, if it's someone who's been making threats and stuff, that's, it's a way to kind of just kind of keep, uh, keep, uh, keep folks safe. So like I said, law enforcement, judges, certain elected officials who've seen, uh, get threats and stuff like that, that's where, that's where you see this, that come from.
Yeah.
But all that information is available if you reach out to the assessor's office. They, you know, through, through just a regular request, they can, they'll provide that information.
Okay, okay. Kind of a way to kind of keep their, uh, where they live anonymous for security purposes.
A little bit, yeah. You know, you, you can have, I mean, in today's day and age, it was probably more important back before, you know, the advent of, um, you know, just how good some of the search engines and stuff are now, you know, where it's almost impossible to be anonymous, you know? But, uh, at the same time, and, you know, the, I, I, as someone who's received death threats myself, um, and actually somebody who was sentenced to 18 months in jail for making threats against me and my family, um, I certainly have a much better appreciation for why that happens now. Um, you know, especially, you know, when threats, you know, like I said, you know, I haven't talked too much publicly about it, but, um, that was, um, you know, it's one thing, you know, when you sign up to be in the public eye, it's another, you know, when they bring your children into it. It's, it is what it is, but, um, you know, at least, uh, at least we got some justice out of that one.